Okay, um, I will call this meeting to order. Um, since trustee Brooks is not here as far as we can tell. Um, okay, so then we will have our flag salute.
Legions to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next we have roll call trustee Ho.
Here.
Um trustee Proctor.
Here.
Trustee Kim.
Here.
And I am here as well. Oh, should we, can we check if trustee Rex is online? Uh, okay, no, um, can I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Um, was that trustee Ho, okay. Um, thanks trustee Kim for the motion, trustee over the uh second, on fair say aye.
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 Okay.
Great, um, thank you everyone, my name is Dr. Keanu Okawa Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. I'm here with uh my amazing colleague, um, Dr. Magda Ededia. Um, who is our Executive Director of Student Services and we're here uh providing an update on school climate. Um, which really centers on student wellness, um classroom and school environments and connectedness as a priority focus. Uh area with clear leadership and strategy guiding the district wide uh implementation and work. Um, as we can see here in our agenda, let me put it on present mode. Here we go, um, uh, the key takeaway here is uh we will kinda go through these uh uh nine items. So that you can get a really global as well as specific uh viewpoint of a lot of our strategies. Um, as you can see here, our strategies are very comprehensive and systematic, um, and it is guided uh by our strategic plan. Um, our goals um is really uh around culture, student voice, increasing attendance and and continuing to deepen deepen our restorative practices. Um, and here's really about strengthening our school cultures uh around safety, belonging. And and really working on this idea of increasing attendance and it a lot of these kinda interplay with each other. Uh, but these are our our four department goals. Um, it's really important here to look at our wellness team because uh you know, our the summit of foster school district has really built a robust multi-layered wellness team. Um, that uh has really included social workers, clinicians, counselors, interns, right? Community school specialists, uh principals, RJ teachers on special assignment. Uh, myself and Dr. Ededia, um, you know, are as as the leads and guides, uh, we really uh have come together to invest deeply in student well-being.
Okay, yeah, just click for me there. Yeah, so again, attendance is a piece that we continue to like encourage and we want students to feel like they come, they wanna come to school. So it's really again shifting that chronic absenteeism and that mindset where you're late and we don't want you here. Like give me a, you know, drilling down on why they're not versus like, we are happy you're here. So that shift is something that we're really working on intentionally this year and looking at the data too, right? And thinking about who are students that maybe we haven't captured or um who are those kids that are in the middle and we see progress? How do we capture them? Um, we have, we have to celebrate our attendance, next slide, there we go. Which is nationally, attendance doesn't look like this. And and I mean, that really goes to the anchors that we have within student services. That we're looking at student voice, we're looking at repairing harm. We're looking at building a culture and a community where students really feel like this is their community. And they have at least one adult that they can go and connect with. Um, and there's, there are, you could see, we're holding really, really well. And there's still areas where even though we're like almost to, you know, ninety-seven or ninety, there are still within those um subgroups. That maybe they may be lower and we'll go to the next slide and we'll just talk about that. And so here. Yeah, the next slide. Yeah, there we go, and so, no, one more, go back. There we go, so while we have so much to celebrate, um, we also are looking at, there's still, there are still areas where we could grow, right? And this year, when we look at year to year, we're seeing that we are doing better overall. So from thirteen point seven eight, right, to twelve point fifty-five, but then if we look at the subgroups, we're really looking much better. With our EL students, uh, which is really something to celebrate, like really for our district. To celebrate all the work that we have been uh pouring into this initiative. But then also our special ed students, like that we're also increasing that sense of belonging, that we're working with our families. To come up with remedies for them to feel like they, they're getting what they need when they come to us. Um, Latino, it, all areas we're looking uh pretty good. We do see a little bit uh of a uptick, right, in our white, so went from seven to to nine percent. And so again, looking at that Asian went from five, from four to five, but overall, we're doing extremely well. Um, and we need, we can do better, so this is the thing, but we're doing really well, so I'm really proud of the work we're doing.
Just to clarify, this is full year last year compared to fall this year?
Yes.
Okay.
It's year to year same comparison, yeah.
Those was a fall last year compared to fall this year?
Correct, yes, yes, yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, and thank you for for asking.
Yeah, clarifying that, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Okay, so again, uh, this is year three of the restorative work. And I go back to attendance again because I think that many times when students don't feel that they feel safe in a school. Or they don't feel something's resolved, they don't wanna come. And so it's us really looking at that it's not just a a formula or or this is a training. It's a way of how we interact and it's also a way that adults interact. Cause sometimes we use the restorative work with adults to have them work things out or adult and student. So we are still practicing and usually it takes about five to seven years for you to be fully like, this is your living it. And so we're year three uh for our schools and then our community schools are not yet there. They've gotten some training for the admin, but not all their staff because they've been focused on the community initiatives. I gotta stop doing my, I, you know, I talk about my hands. So, um, next one. Just, just like students, um, you know, sharing, you know, how someone helped them uh with a issue. And I think that they feel so comfortable sharing. I, again, there's certain individuals, whether it's their restorative justice Tulsa, whether it's their student support Tulsa. Or whether it's just someone on campus and it could be their office staff, it could be um cafeteria. But we are like really working this, this that everyone owns the child. And so we have done, as I've shared, we have done with our classified staff, they're frontline and they have gotten some training. And they really appreciate that they've gotten some training and they would like more, right? So it's like, great, we wanna give you more, but it's just feeling it and it's, it's wonderful to see that. So here's um a little bit of data and we're working on collecting more. But over, over um the last three years, we have very strong understanding, common understanding of what it is. What I will say, you'll see a little bit of the red and we do have one of the community schools that hasn't had the full um implementation. But their admin have, so their admin, both their AP and their and their principal have done the training and they've been leading it. They've been the champions, but it's not to the same degree of you doing your whole school. But I think that um the, the data is really showing us that people really do feel like they understand it. Foundational structures are really good, the data analysis, cause we are looking at data. We can't just say we're doing something, we do look at uh discipline data, we look at attendance. And we also are doing school cultural walkthroughs uh with all the assistant principals and the RJ TOSAs and the student support TOSAs. And I lead them and we look for evidence. And so we have a rubric that centered on restorative practices, what does that look like and feel like? And then we give offerings to those sites that we visit and then we leave wonderings. I'm like, I wonder, you know, does everyone have a calm corner or I wonder something else? So really like, it's great for our assistant principals that we're developing, but just that, that feedback, it's live. And we do that, um, once a month, we do these walkthroughs with the teams and they visit different schools. So that's um pretty good data, I think, here, um, as far as areas of growth. Okay. Um, so you may, you might not remember, but when I, five years ago, we didn't have a progressive discipline matrix, right? And then, and then um we came in and we did that work and we realized that we needed to really have a calibration. So that everyone understood and since that time, we've been intentional that that's just a tool. That's just a tool to calibrate, to kind of reference people, to anchor them on that we're all speaking the same language. When it comes to us, an infraction, when it comes to a suspension. But it's also been really focused on moving from the punitive discipline to really like, what are the intentional interventions? And it's also assembly bills that we're looking at, right? So we have seventeen twenty-nine, we have uh Assembly Bill two seventy-four that really talk about how are we providing support for students? And um, so we also went in and looked at office reflection protocols and this year we did another alignment. So we did a common uh alignment where every school now has a process for a, like if you have a referral, like how do you receive the student? What do you unpack where folks just had stuff that they did and it was just, we just do this. So really making common language and getting people to understand what the process is. And then we continue to look at our, at our discipline data to inform what are still our areas of growth.
Uh, in these next couple of slides, um, it's really where we get to really look at how discipline essentially reflects safer schools. Stronger interventions and pure reactive responses. As Dr. Edia was mentioning, uh, you know, restorative practices have been our guiding principles in terms of, you know, thinking, beliefs and also actions, right? And our, and how we respond to supporting kiddos. Um, year over year comparison, as you can see here.
Wait, if you could go back to the other slide, I just wanted to look at the total.
The total, yeah.
Right, so we have two hundred and ten.
And ten, yeah.
Um, total infractions and they're all over the place. So there, there's fights, there's this, there's that, they're all over the place, but it, actually that's four hundred and ten.
Four hundred and ten, yes, four hundred and ten.
Four hundred and ten, okay, so I just, I just want us to kind of see and there's a wide range too.
I can chime in, what I like about looking at the data this way is this, this is directly from our student information system. So there's no sorting, ordering, it's just giving you everything. The company that does this and they've been doing this for multiple decades, they do a good job of telling you how old the kids are. They often, well, the, the races that, those are all coded, one, two, three, they all correspond to a different designation. Um, but I think you can see even historically, Latino students have always in this district held a higher proportion. Which is also part of our work.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly.
Yeah.
And you can see twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, one hundred and two, nine twelve. Twenty-four, twenty-five, sixty-four.
They say that the categories are.
Not condensed.
Yeah.
What happens is if there's a, an incident in one year that doesn't exist in another, the report won't show categories that don't happen. So it does look shorter, um, the other thing that happens is the city California will update the reporting requirements for suspensions. So like, on a year-to-year basis, the ed code will change slightly enough that certain descriptors of the behavior might change. So like, one example is there are some years that'll say things like horse play and then the next year might be play fighting. So we do just a little bit of that sort of like cross tabulation to figure out what is this behavior that will support you, so, yes. Yeah.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
And one of the things that we do intentionally is that we have administrators get their data. So they get their data monthly, we want them to look at it. And so think about, sometimes we have a perception that we, everything's like falling apart, right? But then you look at the data and you're like, it's not, right?
Something bad, yeah, yeah.
But, but you can feel that, right, in that moment. Or maybe things are picking up and you need to do something specific. Especially if you see you might have a group of students, maybe it's more boys.
Right.
Um, so you wanna think about that as well.
And that helps inform a lot of the goals at the site level with their cares team uh and their local leadership teams.
Interesting, okay. So Wayfinder, I know that we did have um a lot of curiosity about it and I wanted to just bring back. It's actually pretty cool curriculum, um, and this is what it looks like, if you could see, it's kind of like, kids get in there, there's um, it's, it's used at the high school. But it's also financial literacy and we have curriculum that's like third through eighth, but we're only using this at the middle school level. So it's really getting kids to thinking about investing, budgets, financial goals, oh, go back. Um, and then there's the digital citizenship, like how do we, how do we get into that? How do we develop um responsibility? So there, these are social media, like what should we be looking at? And there's specific lessons that they're using in advisory. That uh we selected this curriculum because this was also some of our goals to get students to think about the financial piece. But also the um digital citizenship as well as just some of the social emotional um offerings that this program offers.
And on this one, is this available at all of our middle schools?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And it's during the advisory period, correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
So for the um like K through eights, how do they integrate it into their?
So K for eight, they're still using the uh second step curriculum. And so the question, so this is our first year with this just for the comprehensive middle schools. And then we could talk about, I know.
Gouging that out, yeah.
If, if there's a, you know, again, then we'll talk about if second step uh isn't enough in the K eights. Then we could utilize this for their sixth, seventh and eighth grade.
Got it.
Um, students.
Yeah.
But this is just for the comprehensive middle schools.
Yeah, and we'll have implementers and role models to be able to support the case if that's, if it's directly from one ago.
Yeah. Again, just, just some of the, the, you know, some of the lessons that they might see.
This next strategy, anonymous alerts, as you know, our AA system is, is really continuing to support our, our, our schools. With um notifying us uh of situations and we still lean on this uh all the time. Um, you know, most of the situations that get reported through here are site-based, right? Um, you know, obviously we're informed all the time, um, but for the most part, it's site-based, our, you know, teams are able to respond to it and address and 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 kind of move forward. Um, but you know, the district continues to maintain a strong and responsive uh approach at, you know, at communicating with our site teams. You know, uh, through this communication system that allows uh for greater student trust and greater staff trust and greater family trust. Um, because they, they do use this uh uh to, to really, you know, provide. And sometimes, you know, it ranges like, as you can see here, from year to year. Um, uh, you can see that, you know, I think this year it's only been three uses that we've really had to, from the district side, have really had to. Um, step in and support, most, again, most of them are site-based of situations.
But we, so we always get notified, so when a school gets it, uh, my, my immediate thing is like, handle it and let me know, give me that.
Yeah, but we always get notified, yeah. Yeah. Handle it, yeah.
But I, you can also see that there's been a decrease, you know, but we're still, they're still using it.
Yeah.
And so that's the great thing is that, um, because students are also going and reporting things themselves. Or they're talking to their RJ Tulsa or they're talking to their assistant principal. So it's just another place.
Like an outlet, right?
Yeah, another safe place for them.
For them to articulate.
And they get a response.
Immediately.
Yeah.
Question on this, are these tags ones that they've submitted or that we verify? So when it says gang related, is that because the claim claimed that or the?
Oh, no, it's claimed, no, it's a claim.
It's a business, how it's inserted.
These are, yeah, yeah, these are, these are how the students are interpreting or might feel it, right? It could be, again, they, they might suspect that there's some drugs and alcohol, it's not that it's confirmed.
Right, exactly what you're saying.
Cause it's an anonymous learned, you know, report.
Report, yeah.
Got it.
And let me go back to twenty twenty-one where this came from. We had an incident at Burrell Middle School where one of our teenagers was having a lot of big feelings. Anger feelings, deep, deep depression feelings. And um at the beginning of the year told classmates, I think I want to shoot everybody at the school. It's like, like was not like being subtle about this, was like telling his classmates, if I could, I would come here and I would just do, you know, do this act of violence. That was in September. October, November, various things going on on the internet, looking things up. Turn, the start of the school year. Um, he's now in class actively like looking at websites, doing some pretty intense behaviors. And probably a minimum of ten different kids see this. Um, and then a kid goes home and he wants to go to the mall and he's like, dad, can I go to the mall? Like, my friends are all going to tell mom that I was like, no, kids get into problems there, I don't want you to go there. The kid says, ah, you send me to school and I go to school with somebody who wants to, who wants to harm everybody there? He, I sit right next to him, but that's like, what are you talking about? Yeah, this kid in front of me has all this stuff on his computer. So the parent calls the district and we start this whole big investigation. What we realized then was there wasn't any way for kids to tell us that they saw something without telling us who they were. So even when it put their safety at risk, the desire to remain anonymous was more a threat to them than an actual threat. And obviously nothing happened and we dealt with the whole thing, but also parents did. There were three different parents whose students told them that this was going on and the parents didn't tell us. Because the parents were afraid of us knowing who they were, cause they thought we would ultimately like let out the fact that it was that. You know, whereas I don't wanna get my, make my kids sad by announcing that my kid told me and now I'm telling you.
Or put a target on them.
Put a target.
It was a real scary, yeah, like at the time, we just, we're just like, how is this even possible? That you know about something like this and don't tell us right away? Anonymous alerts help create a funnel of information that's, they're almost never that serious. Like very, very, very rarely will someone share something like that. And every school has a different culture, so there's some schools where kids put anonymous alerts regarding the grades their teachers assign. Without violating the Freedom of Information Act, I can show you. There's other schools that like don't use it enough or, you know, like a kid might be like, I can handle this and not put it in there. Whereas at another school, like even the sort of the specter of something is enough to submit the anonymous alert. So I think it's also very cultural in the sense of like the culture of the school. Where it's like, send an AA the minute you think something happens and then the other, on the other end, like, we got this. Like if we have to, have to, have to, we may send something like that. So ironically, the schools that are perceived to have safer campuses have more anonymous alerts which show up in those. Those are disproportionately at Baudoch Middle School.
Interesting.
And disproportionately under-reported at Abbott Middle School or Burrell, where we have more incidents that end up. So the two reports don't align, the discipline report and the, the AA report. But we, we, I think it's, it's like a good way for us to think about how to work with our young people in terms of saying, okay, for you, this, you know, necessitated an anonymous alert. Let's sit with you and go through it.
Well, and the great thing is that it is anonymous, but you can still have dialogue.
Yeah.
And so I could be like.
And many kids do.
Yeah, and so I could be like, if you feel comfortable Maggie, I don't know who you are, right?
They do, yeah.
You could tell me who you are, you could come visit me.
Yeah.
And it happens that sometimes the kids are like, yeah, can, can I come in and just talk to you about it?
Yeah. And just talk, yeah.
And they're like, you know, yeah, sure, we'll pull you out or meet you in the library or some, so there is this, while it's anonymous.
Yes.
There's this contact that they can dialogue back and forth and it can bridge this stronger connection.
Although I should say, they almost never come from our K eight schools. Our K eight schools have a culture where these sort of peer relationships are, are just part of a site-based kind of conversation. And they're addressed at those sites, so anonymous alerts from our, our K eights are very rare.
Well, they all have known each other.
That's right, yeah.
They're not, they're not new to each other.
Yeah, well, and they know each other's family.
We're trust, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Memory lane.
Memory lane, yeah.
Memory lane.
So, so this is just a report that students can just go to our website and they can file a, a report. We don't get very many of them, but we do monitor them and um, I was at Metal Heights and I, I took a photo. Cause the kids promised themselves to be kind as one of their classroom, you know, commitments. Right, so I just love that, when you go and you do one of those school cultural walkthroughs.
One, yeah.
It's like, they're like, we promised to be kind, but then at the bottom you can't see it. We also promised to be like authentic to ourselves and like, I was just like, oh, this is cool.
So nice, yeah.
So not a lot, um, which is good, it's, we like that there's only three total.
If you feel like being petty about it.
If you feel like, well, you know, that's fine, like, like, give me some Play-Doh, Play-Doh, the Play-Doh, yeah, let's, like, do, take care of it there.
Documenting.
So documentation, yeah, so here is self-referral or staff referral. Someone is kind of thinking about creating, you know, harm to themselves or other. We are looking, so our, our, our statistics are really, as far as we're going down.
Yeah.
If you look at the total.
That's the trend, yeah.
But if you look at the data a little deeper, we also see that our male data this year is really up. And so it is something for us to be mindful, like what it, you know, who are those?
What is that signaling?
Who are those students, right, that are feeling more anxious? Um, and why are they feeling more anxious? And it, and you can kind of look at it, it is more middle school, so, so that's some, a takeaway for us. But overall, we're still, we're still looking good, going down, right?
We're still going, yeah, going out, which is the goal.
We're going in the right direction, but we wanna be mindful of our, of our male students, yeah.
Self-grids, yeah.
And um, okay, that's.
Interesting, the Hispanic Latino has gone way down.
Way down.
Yeah.
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 It's very significant, yeah.
That's another.
That's a, that's a great growing point here, yeah.
So here's a, a healthy uh data, right? So we're, it's, we're looking uh really good.
Yeah.
And I think the analysis uh is that the perception that uh many of our students feel is, you know, increase safety. Um, for our students, there's a decrease from twenty-four on cyberbullying. And it could be some intentional lessons that we're working on and again, that's, that's ongoing. That teaching is ongoing, their teaching, cause it's, you know, technology is ongoing. And then middle schools have um, there's more optimistic and satisfaction for, for how they're feeling versus previous years. So I think again, another positive. Um, and again, we're always looking for those partnerships, this, this me, yeah, this is me. Um, and so really working with our teams. And so again, we, we try to focus on those tier one, tier two interventions. Cause that's where we wanna get our students is before they go to the tier three. But we also have such a great team um that we can capture kids at the tier three and partnerships, not just with our mental health clinicians and social workers. And now we have five interns that are also bringing additional support for us. But also looking at the county and how we can partner with them. Um, and we've done, you know, Samaritan House, we're expanding what's in our backyard so that we have knowledge of it. And that we're using it because they're our neighbors. Um, and then ongoing training, also again, classified, we're really wanting to not just capture our certificated staff, our classified. They're part of wellness, they're part of the culture. Um, and again, we're always training with threat assessments. Um, and now, and how do we determine that suicide assessments, like when do we call police? When, when do we connect parents? And I think that's, it's sometimes really balancing it, but making sure that we don't send a, a student home that's at risk of harming themselves or, or others. And we have to really make that call. Um, and then we're working now, we're gonna be doing some education and training on creating gender support plans. And so that's coming for January sixteenth, we're gonna be working with our staff on that.
And we can provide an update on that as well. I do wanna give a major shout out to the Samaritan House. Uh, as Dr. Edia mentioned, we've been doing a lot of work uh with Samaritan House. Uh, we had professional development day where we had. Uh, we had professional development day where we had a, a tour, a field trip with a lot of our mental health, all of our mental health and counselors and you know, mental health specialists and TOSSAs.
Fifty-eight, I think fifty-eight and they accommodated us.
They did. Uh, and we had stations and groups and, you know, they had giveaways and, and really um, at every session that we attended, when we cycled through, they were so warm and, and really it was about providing wraparound services to families free of judgment, free of cost, free of, you know, um, all of those, of, of those kind of negative feelings around it. It would, it really kind of made us one with them. Uh, the way they embraced us. In fact, we did a second go around with our community schools, uh, CSSs, um, at our com schools. They did a, a more of a targeted in-person intimate smaller group. And again, it was like this beautiful embrace, you know, we're working on um, uh, uh, building even further than we currently are already with our Tolds closets and, you know, a lot of our uh, you know, pantry, food pantries that they're uh, uh, building on. And, and so it was like this beautiful explosion and it, it's great, especially.
Not explosion, but it was a really traumatic experience.
Great experience and um, just a major shout out to the Samaritan House. They really are partnering with us to, to provide.
Well, they also offered our staff to come there and like they said, we can help you with your taxes.
Yes, that's right.
If a spouse is,
Yeah.
you know, laid off and you need something.
They'll work with your resume.
Yeah. So they, so they offered some stuff that the folks that were there were like, I didn't know that.
I know.
I could come and get help and it's not going to cost me. So they weren't just saying, do this for your students in your community, do it for yourself too. So that was, it was really good.
Thank you, everyone.
And if you haven't volunteered.
Oh, yeah, they actually are looking for volunteers. Even if it's one hour.
The best things you'll do, I know it's, it's like figuring out the right time to go, but like you get put in these spaces where everybody's from a, a different place. One person's a doctor, one person has a brother who's mentally ill. One person is a teenager doing this for their, for their senior hours. Another person is, has been with Samaritan House for thirty years and like, within ten minutes, you're all like friends, all helping each other because you're just like doing everything you can because the cars do not stop coming. It's really sad to see how many people in this camp rely on food.
Well, it's going to be a bigger.
Yeah, it's one of those things where just like, I mean, I just wish there was a way that we could have a nice system of just constantly having people there. Because they definitely need the help. The people that are the like, the diehards there, they're, you can tell they're taking on a lot.
A lot.
They asked our staff as part of the training to commit at least one hour. And it could be anything. And so they had fifty-eight people, right? And so, and then you took another group. And they're just like, even if it's an hour.
Yeah.
They, they, they were asking us and I was like, okay, I have to go give them a couple of hours.
Exactly. It makes you feel bad.
Yeah, yeah.
The hard part is just thinking about the right time to go. But like, once you, they'll give you these windows, like, okay, if you come during these times, this is kind of preferable for us. But once you're done, it's kind of like, wow.
Which location was this?
It's at Forty Second, right? Yeah.
Yeah, like over by, you know, over by Hillsdale.
Yeah.
What's the name of that road that's on both?
They even wanted,
Old Al Camino Road.
They wanted to make us lunch for fifty-eight people. And they showed me the lunch because when I connected with them, I told them when I was a kid, I was homeless. And I was in a shelter and I remembered that my, my vision was black and gray for that moment of life. And they wanted to change that for me. And they wanted me to have, so they showed me the food they made. Because I said, all the food was just like black and white. And I was like, where's the sofrito? Where's the salsa? Where's the flavor? And they're like, no, you just get these beans. And I was like, we can make them different, right? But they were like, yeah, I wanted to, but they were like, no, right? And so when I told them that story, they're like, you need to come here and we need to eat your lunch.
You might not like beans.
No, but they showed me, it's beautiful. So they had salmon and rice and vegetable, everything was beautiful. And colorful. And they were like, well, you, you said no to the lunch, but this is what you miss, are missing out. And I was like, okay, you changed my memory. So, yeah, anyways, that was the.
Yeah, I also think like, what Samaritan House is trying to do always is trying to say, what is the need in the community? That's where the whole idea of like having clothing at free or no cost, that's why they help people with their taxes. They're thinking like, there are people who earn more than, than maybe what you would earn in order to need food. But something that stresses us all out is our taxes. So how can we help people who may not be able to pay eight hundred dollars to have somebody do their taxes? What's the, what's that group need?
Yeah.
And that's, I think, it's very, very uncommon for a social service agency to do as much as Samaritan House. Because they're really like, they have their hands in a lot of different, um, you know, program insurers for people in, in our community. Yeah. Yeah.
Now we're all going to go volunteer.
They're definitely like a candidate for Partner of the Year every year. Yeah, they do a lot with Gilia too. They really partner a lot.
Now we open it to you for any, any, any additional questions. We won't talk Samaritan House anymore.
I had some questions on some of the data that you shared. Um, one is I was wondering on the discipline, if there's, particularly the current year. Um, do you have any data based on school site? I'm just curious if there's like any trends where one school is maybe disciplining kids more or less than others? And then another question I had was on anonymous alerts. And I was just curious if you ever, or if the, any, I don't know, teachers, whoever shares information about what kind of, um, like things people were um, anonymously reporting with students to say, here's what we got. And it's obviously anonymous, but here's what we got, here's how we handled it, to just give them a sense of like, this is not some, like action is taken. And here's, just to kind of like get the word out there, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of usage. And I don't know, maybe that's a good thing, or maybe we're missing some students that just are, maybe thinks nothing will happen. Or it's just a, like an anonymous thing that I don't know what happens after that. So maybe more discussion about the process and like real life examples.
There's um, when, when anonymous alerts come in, they, the, the person submitting it will often tell you, because there's dropdown uh, choices. But also even in their text, they'll say, I don't want you to reach out to me. I don't want you to ever find out who I am. I'm telling you, that's, this is for you guys to deal with. There are others who, and first of all, when we get anonymous alerts, we always extend the offer to, hey, say, hey, we can talk to you about this. If you're open to that, we can have a back and forth. And when we submit a response to an anonymous alerts that comes, that comes in, the sender receives it, even if they ask to be anonymous, they'll still hit our response. We won't know who sent it to us. That, that receipt of the response often triggers a response from them saying, well, since you said this, let me tell you what I think about that. We don't keep data on it because it's like, in some cases, we could email the person like six or seven times back and forth, because there's just a lot of like clarification that happens. Um, but we might be able, if the board had an interest um, at seeing what that response rate or that response percentage would look like. Um, I think like,
I could also share that. It's, it's immediate. It's like they respond to them like fairly immediate whenever there's a response because I also get the, the message. And you also get the message.
We all do.
Three people here.
Yeah.
Can I clarify? I guess my, my question was more of like, okay, if I'm a kid that's like getting bullied, I'm not reporting this. But if I knew, hey, hey, kids, last week at, you know, whatever, it doesn't have to be specific, somebody reported bullying. And here's what we, here's the action steps we took. Um, now as a school community, we received ten bullying reports this, this year. And here's what, here are the resources, here's what we do. And say, and to encourage people that this is a tool that they can use. And not so much about like, how do we respond to that one person? But how do we capture kids that may not be utilizing the tool?
So trustee Proctor, they do educate and they do talk about this as a tool, because that's, it's one of the tools. And one of the, and there's an assembly where, you know, school, they tell them, here's a tool.
It's a high-profile strategy.
Yeah. And, and it doesn't get a lot of um, use in that we're not having them in the hundreds. We're having them really low, but students know that this is a place that they can report something and we want them.
About, what I do like about Alison's remarks is that it's a way of saying, let's use the data we do have to create a conversation, to connect it to the program use, to suggest how it might actually lead to action. A person might think like, what is an AA? What's actually going to happen? Especially if they haven't used it before. So I'm, I'm actually, I think that might actually have an interesting way of, of, of maybe increasing a student's faith.
Yeah, that, that someone's reading it.
The school's faith.
Yeah, and that there's an impact. Yeah. So, yeah, and it is something that we, we can certainly talk with the principals at middle school and the, and the assistant principals. Yeah. The other piece is we do see uh, site data based on the
Discipline, yeah.
Yeah, demographics and, and what's happening. So we can look at schools individually based on if we've got eighty-seven of these incidents, where are they coming from? Schools get their reports monthly. So if you have zero, you're still going to get something and it says you've got zero.
Right.
Um, because I want them to be looking at the data so that it's also informing their actions. Um, but yeah, we do have site, individual site data.
And they review it every week.
Okay. And just one like observation, it seems like this year there's quite a bit of like violence with fighting, like it's increased, fighting, punching, kicking has increased compared to like last year. And so I'm just like, I'm curious if that's.
Yeah, it's on our radar. Um, and uh, that's, that's certainly we're seeing, it's a little higher than last year.
Yeah.
We are, we are looking at that. And again, we also know there's a, there's a lot out there in the, in the world, right? So, but we're, we're working with students on how to resolve things without kicking, without fighting, but um.
And we also increased a lot of the parent engagement piece because we partner with families to help uh, heal and help, you know, build really strong, healthy kiddos. So a lot of our strategies is, you know, maximizing our ELAC meetings, our DLEC meetings, our community school meetings are, uh, you know, a lot of the meetings that we held throughout the beginning of the year with parent engagement, right? So, yeah, we're also uh, really heavily focused on that component.
The other thing that um, trustee Proctor mentioned was like, to what extent is there variability in the data of school A versus school B versus school C? And we can produce that and we'll, in terms of like adding content to this um, school board meeting. Um, and the link on, on Symbly, we'll add it uh, after the fact. Um, every single year there are trends that show up. So like, just as an example, last year, Bayside had a rough year. They had a lot of, for them, they had a spike in, in behavior. And I think at that school, it was a lot of different things that resulted in that. They had some changes in administration that were new for them. They had some changes in staff, key staff at certain grade levels that were new for them. But also there was something in the water at Bayside last year.
They had eighteen incidents like the first two weeks of school. Which was more than the entire. So we were all like, what's happening?
Oh, and it cycles, right? It was like Abbott before it was about its one year. So it's like, that information is helpful to just be able to identify like who's the, what's the school that has it this year and how.
Oh, I wish we could, I wish we knew that. We just don't though. It's just kind of like the water. But we do always see, yeah, we do see it. And sometimes it's two schools at once. And then we're like, Diego, you go there, Christian will be here, you know? Yeah, but, but it is something that we do look at for sure. And we can, we can add that.
I think it's also like, we should ta, always keep at the forefront what adolescent teenage behavior looks like in a, in a very early uh, warning um, scenario versus what length of time it takes for a, an incident that seems like, you know, not ideal, but how that turns into a fistfight. I'm working with a school where um, I held a meeting with a student who ended up in a physical fight. I wanted to try to understand specifically about this student, tell me the story from the beginning. And the student says, well, I was walking with my buddies and another group was walking like in an opposite direction. And in this particular school, the physical environment is really squeezed down in this one quarter. And they bumped into each other. And the student says, the other student took his backpack off and wanted to fight me. As a result, I said, well, what, you know, is that a girl? Is that, you know, had you gotten into an argument? Did you, are you in PE and you guys shoved each other? And he said, I've never seen this person before in my life. So, what interested me about this particular situation, why I wanted to spend the time really figuring out what was happening here was a student had some very limited English capability. So I wanted to know what role that may have played. And the student said, I didn't understand what he was saying. Like the other student said a bad word, I understood that, but I didn't really understand what else they were telling me. And, and he said, my friends told me, this person wants to fight me. He said, so of course I put my hands up, like if I think somebody wants to fight me, I'm going to put my hands up. Now, I met with the other side. I said, tell me your version of the story. The kids say, we're walking, we bumped into each other. I don't like when people touch me. It's a real trigger for me if somebody bumps into me. But the friend says, I told my friend, chill out, dude, you can't fight over somebody accidentally bumping into you. And that's what he was telling his friend. The kid who has a limited English capacity thought this kid was saying, hey, fight him back. The kid was saying, hey dude, like, you know, chill out, let's take a minute here. That little incident, a day later resulted in a, in a, in a, in a physical fight. And at, in that scenario, we missed some opportunities to provide the right kind of intervention. And we're sort of using that as a, as a way to reset for all of our teams at our schools. How do we start with a very initial scenario? What does that first counseling conversation look like? Who needs to know about it? Do we call parents? If we do, what do we tell them? How do we bring those two kids back together as early as possible? Um, and I think like, according to our presentation, we would have done certain things, but in real life, we didn't. So we have to think about like, to Alison's point, we have to go to schools where we are seeing discipline happen and say, what is happening? Why did that incident take place? And for me, it's like, this is like very fascinating work because I want Christian and Margaret to have the tools with their teams to be able to respond to this. But also there is an element of just being there and checking on things and asking about things that, you know, I think both of you would say, we want to be at those schools more now. We want to, let's figure out how to get some of our meetings and squeeze them down and do them more now, you know, when the kids aren't there. So it's just, I wouldn't say it's a wake-up call, but it's just a way to like,
Yes.
reframe it for us, in particular at schools where we see incidents.
An uptick. Yeah, and I think, I mean, you kind of referred to us, but I think there's also like a background level of stress that kids and families are feeling. Yeah, like maybe we can't really ignore that, right? Like the utter chaos of the last like month and a half.
Exactly. And I think if you're under housed or if you're underfed, yeah. I mean, right now, they're talking about, you know, what are we going to do for kids when we're on break? Who don't have food and aren't getting the supports that they need.
If they lose SNAP benefits.
Well, yeah.
In school for a week.
Like what are they, yeah, it's just, it just is a reality.
Ten meals a kid misses, yeah. A kid that needs that meal.
Yeah. But, but good stuff.
Good stuff, yes.
We haven't fixed the world, but good stuff. We're making progress. We have some stuff we can feel proud of, I think. Uh, yeah. Trustee Ho, do you have?
Uh, yes, thank you so much. Um, first wanted to say, Dr. Rubokaba, Dr. Redia, thank you so much for the presentation. You know, Dr. Redia, thank you also for sharing, you know, very vulnerably, you know, your own story, you know, at one point. And I just wanted to say, I feel really thankful that you're, are, you know, i- in the role that you are, right? Executive Director of Student Services, that you can, you're in a place where you can help like little Margaret's, right? You know, you know, in, in our district and, and that you're coming from a place of empathy and understanding. So I really appreciate that you're in this role. And that you can kind of restore maybe what was, you know, something that you didn't have, that you can give to other students.
Yeah, thank you so much for that.
Yeah. Um, I also wanted to share that I really, you know, appreciate, you know, hearing about the restorative justice practices. And when I went on the school board visit, uh, you know, I don't know, a week or so or two, I, I don't know, my, my weeks blur. I'm in college admissions season, so my weeks are blurring. But when I went to Abbott, um, I really saw a huge shift, a huge transformation from like what Abbott has been known for and what it is today. And, you know, when talking to people and the families and the, and the faculty, they all pointed, I mean, obviously there's so many positive things going on, but a lot of them was, were pointing towards the restorative justice work that's been done there. Um, so it was just really cool to see and students were sharing like how positively felt like school culture is at. how positively felt like school culture is at Abbott now and they feel safe. Um, so I think this work that we're doing is super, is so important. Um, and it's so foundational for kids to be able to learn. It's, it, you have to feel safe first, right? Um, before you can even sit down and learn. I wanted to ask, um, and I don't know, because I know we're in year three, right? And there's still year four and year five to go. So that might be in the plans for year four and year five. But I know different districts and different schools have um really empowered student or student leaders um to take on some of these restorative justice, like uh, like they, they, they get trained. Um, and so they're able to lead, you know, like talking circles and things like that. Um, I wanted to ask, so it seems like right now, you know, a lot of it is kind of the focus is, you know, comes from the TOSSAs and, and training this faculty and staff. But I wanted to ask if there's any kind of plan in the future to like empower students to be able to, to do this work too.
That's a great uh question, and it's a natural um movement that we need to do. So we are doing a little bit of that at Burrell, we are looking at Abbott, but it's taking, we actually have to be more intentional with the training for the students. And it is, it is for us to, next stage is for us to do some training where students can be leading the work. Because the goal is that you don't just have someone that's an outside provider. Like right now, we're, we have the outside provider very limitedly. And really it is to um expand students and stepping up and being able to lead this and leaning on those adults that are trained and can do the work and guide them and redirect them. And when it gets too sticky, it's just like, you know, okay, tag, tag me out. I need somebody else. But that would be the, the next step. And then for community schools, we really need to um also open that opportunity for them to get some of that training. So that's, that's also in the, in the hope that we can get there with community schools as well, which we will.
I think if we listen to our students to go, um, I think they'll come up with a lot of good ways for us to do that. A couple of weeks ago, we did a series of interviews with students in our after-school programs at three schools. And um in these interviews, we asked them questions about community schools, the four pillars, leadership, community involvement, et cetera, et cetera. And um, I think we generally and very generically had like a, an, an expectation that it would be nice to hear from the kids, you know? It's just more sort of, I don't know, cursory, like, let's meet with the kids, but let's, let's kind of, let's see what they have to say. And the quality of the kids' feedbacks just really, it's gonna come to the school board maybe a few weeks out and you'll be able to hear it. And we have these like, these recordings that the kids made and it's incredible. Pretty wild what even elementary school students can tell you what they think about. We asked them like, you know, what could we do to make this school feel more, make, make you feel more belonging? And the answers they gave sound like in a lot of cases, teacher answers, really, really thoughtful, elegant, touching. So I think to trustee Ho's point about, you know, spending the time to figure out how to get kids more involved in doing this restorative work as a way to just amplify the effect, but also to teach skills to kids who might really flourish as a result of being invited into doing some of that work. And, and also like at our K eights too, right? Because there are things that happen in our K eights, but like definitely at our, at our typical middle schools, but also.
And their lifelong skills. It's like if you can figure it out as a peer mediator, you know?
Some of us do today.
Yeah, exactly. You're gonna be in HR, you know? You'll be the next superintendent solving all those problems.
So it's also like a career-making experience for kids, right? To be able to take on this leadership.
It's a disposition, it's a skill, yeah.
Thank you so much. Um, I also had, um, oh, I'm sorry, um, were you gonna say something?
No, go ahead.
Oh, um, I also had some questions about slide twenty, the um documentation of risk assessment. Um, so I think I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding the data correctly. Um, so like, for example, you know, I see like twenty, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and like the numbers on the bottom, twelve, seventeen, and nine. Uh, is it that like, for example, in like year twenty, twenty-four, there were like seventeen like forms filled out? And then of the seventeen, um, like fifty-eight percent of those forms were for students who are Hispanic or Latino?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so that also helps me color some of this, because I was like, why do some of these numbers look like they're getting worse or better? You know, like, but it's percentage right from that number. Thank you. And then the second question I had was the graph above it, risk level. I was curious like what those numbers mean, like how is that measured? Um, what, what's kind of happening with that graph thing?
So that graph might be that someone, it could be an adult did the form or a student did the form. And when they do the questions, a series of questions to see where are you? That low, right, could be like, you're sharing this and you're feeling this, but you don't have an active plan. You don't have means to act, do some harm. But you might be speaking some, some language that people wanna do an evaluation. Um, and so high is that you have a plan and that we need to, you know, involve other people. And we need to get you some, some help right away. And so that's where the three, the highs are, are ones that we really um wanna provide immediate support.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, like, make sure we have a, a plan before they go home. Yeah.
Great. Um, and one last quick question. Um, slide four. Um, you know, we were breaking down like the wellness team and how many people are in different parts. You know, I think, you know, as a counselor myself, right? Um, I'm very curious to know, like, how many counselors do we have versus counseling interns? You know, I've, I've, I've been an intern once and, you know, I've hosted interns and they're a different caliber than a experienced counselor. So I was just curious what that number breakdown is.
So off the top of my head, I believe we have two interns. And I can, I can confirm that, but I think it's one or two counseling interns that we have. We have five um mental health uh interns.
Counselors altogether in the high forties, low fifties.
Great, thank you so much.
Um, thank you again for the presentation. I always really enjoy this one. I know this is a very um touchy topic at times in our district, but I think especially seeing all the survey results, the kind of general mood at a lot of the schools when we go there, experiences, students, parents, and I think more and more students we've seen live at our school business and others, think of restorative justice programs, peace rooms and others as somewhere they know to go. And I think um, you know, my daughter just started middle school, so it's very like top of mind for me for a lot of these as well. So really appreciate the progress we've made as a district. Um, some of the questions I have are related to ones that I've raised previously. And I'm just curious to know. So I think following up on trustee Proctor's point, um, having the global view is great. I understand from purpose this presentation, that's kind of what we have. Having the site specific would be helpful. And I think even going deeper than that, I think to, I think what trustee Proctor was alluding to, there might be certain classrooms that have an out, like outsized issue, um, whether that's because of the teacher's behavior or because of student's behavior in that setting. And then I think one question I have is it seems like, to what extent do we know if there was an individual? So for example, if we have seventy-three class disruptions in three months and twenty of them were from one student, I feel like that changes the way I would wait and look at this data. Um, and it kind of reframes that problem. So again, not something we can cover in a study session necessarily. But I guess to what extent do you all have that kind of information, that level of visibility to really see certain signals through the overall noise and picture? Would be my first question.
So we have all the ability to see that. I mean, and what we would do, and that's a really great example, because we could have Margaret gets in trouble and she's been sent to the, you know, office twenty times. And so again, that's where we would activate an SST. That's where we would go to care team and talk about, I gotta, you know, someone's getting sent out. Or you might have a, in the middle school, you may be at the classroom where the student does great, but every day they're being sent out of the classroom or every day they might, so again, we do go back and look at that data. And we have principals look at the data and their teams look at the data. And sometimes they'll loop us in and they'll say, you know, can you help us? Or um, what sort of coaching can we give, right? And sometimes it's about what other services can we provide for that family? Because that's also, the family may be in crisis. So that's again, and then we tap in our mental health team. And we say, well, if there's a lot going on for that particular student, they got ten. And I, I can tell you, there are some in here that may have ten infractions, right? And so then, as a team, what can we do with our wraparound services? And then how can we tap if they need more the county? And so sometimes I know you see my board updates that when I talk about level ones and level two threat assessments. And sometimes when I get to a level two, I always am partnering with the county and talking about what else can they do besides all of what we're offering? Because we can offer a lot, but maybe the family needs even more. And they, they will then tap in and say, well, we can get you this, we can do that. Um, and so, did I kind of answer that?
But we can definitely, you know, explore some data tables that single out that.
Well, we wouldn't single out teachers.
No, no, not teachers, just the data, the numbers, right? If it's one kid doing it all, of course, you know?
And I think that's helpful because I think when some parents express concern about this, it's because they don't have the same level of visibility. And so as board members, like you said, we do hear about those escalated instances and how it's being addressed. But it's not something that obviously we would ever publicly disclose.
Right.
And so I think it's just a good reminder to any folks who may watch this later that that is being handled at that level. Um, and I think I asked you this clarification before, and if I understand correctly, a single incident could technically trigger multiple codes.
Yes.
So if a student had, you know, threatened somebody and then that resulted in fighting and resulted in some disruption, you could theoretically have multiple of these, exactly.
It could, because it, yeah, for example, they could be fighting and they also had a, a knife. And then it could also be, I mean, uh, disruption, right? So it could be three codes in one.
Got it.
But I think we um, when we started implementing restorative practices five years ago, and building the systems around it, I think we had a really hard time with accuracy telling parents, this is how often things are happening. And this is what we do when these things happen. If you guys recall, we went round and round with our employee groups about how inaccurate the data was. Schools saying like, I know the principal doesn't put any discipline in the system, so that's a lie. It just looks good. So then you would have like, at the time, we had schools that weren't entering things into the computer. And others who were taking really small infractions and saying, that's obscenity. Or that's threatening. And the threatening is, is more like a disagreement. So the first couple of years, we, if you recall, it was environmental.
I was, I was, yes.
Finding what this was, because we wanted the data to ultimately mean something.
Took a year. It took us a year.
So when there's a fight, like now, it's fight. Kids got into a physical altercation with each other. Five years ago at school A, it may have been horseplay. And at school B, it may have been an assault. It wasn't.
It wasn't calibrated.
It wasn't calibrated at all. I think like, being able to pull that school level data and it, for whatever reason, the system's not letting me in now, otherwise I could have done it during this meeting, because it's like very excessive. And what's, what does take a little bit more time is to go to the speci- uh, the specificity of like finding individual student repetition of behavior, because you have to pull like a student by student report and then it just take, it just takes time. You can still do it, but like as far as like looking multiple years, multiple infractions over time at a single school, we can absolutely absolutely do that. And then that will help us interpret, you know, increases or declines. Um, but I still feel like, I think it was Alison, two or three years ago, one of these, Alison, who said, if there's even one suspension, I still want us to talk about why we have to do this. Because I think that's, and, and actually Alison, I don't know if you know this.
I remember that board meeting.
Lily remembers.
I'm gonna cry in my office.
Never forgot that. Alison made me cry.
I ain't crying, I ain't crying.
No, no, I just mean, we, you and I actually, we tease about that. We have these, 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 these meetings and this work and, you know, you want your sites to feel supportive, but you also have to like have a conversation about what happened here, what's going on here. And you also have to like respect what it means to be at a middle school and just have a bunch of, some of you will have them soon, a bunch of teenager energy, but then they all collide and all together and
They're always hungry.
Then they're always hungry, then they argue.
They're angry.
Um, but still, the, the questions from the board, as usual, they're like right on target.
Absolutely.
Always pushing us into like what should we be thinking about in the next step.
And I didn't want to follow up on that specific, because I think one of the growing pains and trustee Watkins and I met with, I think it was media members last year, and there was a concern that they didn't have a shared understanding, that they felt like things that should have escalated historically weren't under this new framework. Um, and some of that was part of the growing pains in communication, the kind of culture reset that we're having. And I guess is it our sense now, and this is just colloquially from parents, teachers that I've spoken to, it seems that we're in a better place, but is it the district's view that a lot of those issues have been resolved or there's ongoing conversations?
Here's what I'll tell you, is it's good to listen and then it's good to like step back and think about how can we respond? One of the takeaways for me in hearing that was how are we doing the referral process and how are we communicating? And so that's when we, this year, we started with our first professional development, was that everyone was norming their. So we created a district protocol on how you do the referrals and it was shared with staff. And this is it. And so we already have the, the progressive discipline matrix, right? We already have all these normed processes. But we didn't have that piece, because, you know, everyone kind of does things a little different. And I was like, no more little different. Now we're all gonna have a norm process. And you can put your flavor in it. You wanna call it a little bit different? But so everyone did it and they did it with their staff. And so teachers felt like, the feedback was that they're like, whoa, why did we do this sooner? Well, and it, and it helps, but it also helps teachers, it also helps parents, because it's like consistent now. And so that was just rolled out. So my hope is that we're gonna continue to get good feedback and good experiences from that.
I see that pantsing has gone down fifty percent.
Well, we like pantsing. We, we do appreciate that. It's going down. I don't want, yeah.
Adults are happy with that.
Adults are very happy.
Um, but yeah, I mean, thank you so much for, for all of this. I mean, I've spoken before about how, you know, I'm, I'm just really glad that there are so many adults on campus who are trained to help kids like, yeah, to help kids um work through whatever things they're going through. And it might, you know, might change year to year, you know, it might just be like they have a, they're not really gelling with a, a classmate or a, um, or a teacher, what, whatever it may be. But I think, um, you know, I've been kind of surprised, uh, like pleasantly surprised at how um, I think kids have a higher level of familiarity with like the language and the, the communication, like it made me feel this way when that person did this and like, that's why I did X, Y, Z. Um, but there, you know, a lot of times they're taking it to the counselor, they're taking it to some other adult on campus who can who knows them, who may have been at that school for many years and like knows all the people involved and is really able to like help them in this non, non-judgmental way. And so I think like that's just really, you know, it's just amazing, right? Like that's not something I remember ever having in school or high, yeah, in school like ever, right? And, and I think to develop these communication skills, like that's a huge part of it. And then having the support there too. So I just really appreciate what all the, you know, what all the staff members do for our kids.
We had a, um,
Thank you, thank you so much.
We had a um super salad today at Foster City, well, first at Bowditch and then Foster City Elementary. Because as you know, we're doing our big community strategic plan. And we went out and met with um Dr. Gall and the teachers over at Bowditch. And that was always, as always, it was fun. It's a big group, they're very lively. And then myself and Lisa Joseph drove over to Foster City Elementary. Um, which I jokingly told the Bowditch staff, I call it Fosters, I, I call it Bowditch Junior Junior High School, because it kind of feels like, like it's just unlike the minor leagues of junior high, because it's so big and um, and we were sitting there and having this conversation and a parent was having, making these remarks about, I'm sorry, a teacher was making remarks about drivers actually. And how she observed some pretty bad driving this morning in front of the school and it stressed her out. She was telling this story. I said, well, I wish you could see the um Nordstrom drop-off that we have at Parkside, where, are you aware of this, Jean, where they allow seven cars in at once. They all go one right after the other. And they wait. And then a student or the principal or staff goes and opens the door for the student and the student gets out. And then a student or the principal or staff goes and opens the door for the student, and the student gets out. Then all the other six cars don't open their doors, nobody gets out, you wait for the door to be opened for you. The sort of, to me, the genius in doing that is you tell the community, dropping your kids out here isn't fast. It isn't for your convenience, you can't zip in and zip out. You wanna do that, park a block and a half down the street and walk your kid up to the school. So it puts in this mandatory kind of like, slow process, and then it's kind of nice, you know, and, but the teenagers do it. So I said it jokingly, cause they, you know, she was telling the story about how stressful it was this morning at Foster City. Then the teacher next to her said, you know what, my son goes to Parkside and he's in great, he loves doing that. So he's one of the kids who's the Nordstrom staff.
He opens the door.
So she starts going into all these examples of Parkside. She said, another tie-in to this meeting, she said, I've been taken into the Samaritan House all year to volunteer, because in, at Parkside, adolescents are earning money all year long to earn a trip at the end of the year. It's part of their program, they go on an April trip, and they're encouraged to start businesses or to volunteer and try to accrue from their parents. So financial support to go on the trip, but they don't want the parents to just write a check for three hundred dollars. They want the kid to do something to help other people, to earn, in their mind, the support to be able to do that. And, um, and then she started to talk about what student leadership looks like at Parkside, and the teachers at Foster City couldn't believe it. And then all of them said like, we've worked here for so long, they never told us. It was really a fun, a fun experience, because they couldn't square like, oh man, that's sort of amazing, the way you're describing it. And then she went into other things about the learning plan and the work period and all this other stuff that they do. But it was like a reminder that, given the right kind of conversation, we can allow kids to be leaders, can allow kids to help solve problems.
Oh, yes.
If the adults, and I would argue, we as adults, get ourselves all wound up trying to solve the problems for kids, and we're good at it. Like, we're, the data would tell you, we're making a lot of progress, but I think we're at the point where we have to start putting the sort of, the crown off of our heads and saying, what if we ask the kids to do some of this? What if we create the space for the kids to get involved in this? And that's what I think I heard, heard in your from trustee oh, and from other, the other remarks is like, it's sort of like opening a door for us. And it's the right time, cause we're part of this community strategic plan, so it just might be the right moment for that.
My kids have a lot of opinions, so I'm sure that there's a lot of opinions out there of like, how we can do things better and, um, but yeah, I mean, I, I a hundred percent agree with that, because like they're the ones who are kind of living the reality of, you know, how things work on their campus and, you know, what, yeah, they, I'm sure they have like a lot of, um, ideas, yeah, that we should listen to.
Can I make one more comment? I didn't, I just wanted to say, um, Superintendent Ocho, I feel like you've criticized me before on the fact that I never and so now that I'm like taking a step back from my comments of just diving in on how we could do better, I do wanna just say that, um, having been on the board four or five years where we started from just feeling like school was kind of chaotic and, uh, particularly in middle school, um, middle schools where, you know, kids were getting suspended all the time, um, I do wanna just say that I'm really impressed by where we are today. But before I leave, before my term is up, I'd love to see the wellness team slide, but like, what it looked like five years, like, like two thousand nineteen when I joined the board?
I can tell you, it's not definite.
Yeah, I mean, the amount of resources we put into ensuring that our students feel like they belong, that they have adults that care about them, that they are safe and loved by, um, everyone in our district, is, it's, it's just amazing to see that. I know, and, and you can look me up online, but I will defend kids, like, no matter what. I'm, uh, I'm hardcore about kids and, um, I think that the reason I am not okay with one kid getting suspended is because I wanna say, well, what happened that day? Where, like, how did he start his day or she, but most likely it's he, just based on the data. And like, what, what do we do to support him or her? Um, and so I just wanna say thank you to everybody that's doing this hard work. And I know, um, we put so much on everybody's plate in this district, like, we're expecting them to teach our kids how to read and write and do math and also make sure that they're being really good human beings and that we're sending them off into the world, um, as really good people. So just wanted to, you know, celebrate the, um, success and acknowledge my, my pride in this area. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, um, I guess since we're like an hour and a half into this meeting, uh, can we check for public comments?
Online, um, there are no public comments.
Okay, uh, yes, we
There's a public
Yeah, any, any in-person public comment? Thank you, uh, okay, well.
You have a fun bike safety event yesterday.
That's today. E-bikes, e-bikes, yes.
And one more tomorrow, if anybody wants to listen.
Ride around.
There's a special Olympics event tomorrow too.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, okay, um, thanks trustee him for the motion, trustee Ho for the second, all favor say aye. Right, meeting adjourned at six thirty-two, thank you.
Thank you. Bye.